All in the here. Jennifer Slendy here.
That's all. We got one agenda, this is a public hearing, I propose this three twenty four, twenty twenty five. See as a budget. Two million nine hundred forty two thousand six. So I'm gonna get up, give a little presentation here, walk through some slides to answer some questions, and then if you guys can answer your questions, but hold them to the end, and then we'll, we'll probably come in next thing and answer any kind of your. You guys know, there you go, guys? Good? What do you really like?
Yeah.
Alright. Do you have any, we're giving any, so we do not have any, but we've got pretty pictures, so. And if you want any data that is here, give the front row sign line, they get that for you.
Asians that's in the outfit. Yeah.
Bear with me, is that alright? So break a little agenda, what we're about to go over, so it'll be the operating budget, and we'll be talking about reserve funds, kind of how those are working, what those are for. We're gonna do some year-over-year comparisons, and then we'll talk a little bit about the mechanics of the special town meeting, that's gonna be held on Thursday. Alright, so the budget overview. So before I kind of get into the numbers, one of the guys has got understanding, thought process flows from school board, as they are gonna do this. First piece here, and most important point is that goals to maintain the outstanding education program, and I was worked to provide our students for generations, so that was the first thing. Sorry, and then if anybody happens to see somebody that needs to be admitted. So I'm like. Alright, the second was, we're working hard to follow in all state statutes, specifically, we'll talk about that involves around managing the fund balance. Obviously, we need to comply with all the existing contracts, and then our goals to running the twenty dot. We don't want this to be a one-year budget, we want to make sure we have plans in, and processes in place that we can start looking at so we make consistent good decisions for what we protect. Alright, so this, if you wanna look at the budget from a percentage perspective, what it looks like. So it's a little bit different than you might be used to taking a look at the budget, because you're probably used to looking at the different article. The art, the reason the articles are structured the way they are, comes back to extend it, those articles are structured in that way, because that's how the statement saving, uh, please, demands that we structure our books. It makes a whole lot of sense if you are a large, small district, but it gets a little bit complicated when you're actually trying to break up things. When you start talking about smaller, smaller spaces to play best. For instance, you break apart elementary versus secondary education costs. In some cases, for us, those get, that might be the same person with working in low variance. So you might see somebody's salary, for instance, it's split between different articles. Or you might see, you know, as you're actually managing your budget, say, like, facility costs are broken down, managed, and we get down to charge the caps by different, uh, uh, secondary or elementary education. So we look at it a little bit differently sometimes, we gotta take a look at it, uh, by going in and actually carrying apart the different so you can see what's really been spent in each different. As you might imagine, the biggest difference where you've got cost is compensation for education. Fifty-five percent of the total school budget is tied back to teacher or education competition, so. You might get a little bit surprised, I think a lot of people said they hear things like transportation, transportation, or programs, like, over fifty percent of our budget is driven by, by teacher competition. Well, you got facilities, that ten percent administration, then fourteen percent, and then it goes down, down to extra curriculum, which are very, very important to the students, that's that four percent of the total, uh, whole, whole budget. So now, once you kind of look at it at this perspective, the next thing to think about, I apologize for the, you know, I should know better, why not now, it's hard to see, but that, that's sixty-seven percent is all on there. What we're trying to show here is, not all of the budget is up for grabs, fifty-one percent, that fifty-five percent of the, the education competition is tied back directly back to the teacher contract. So those are dollars, those cents, then we can go and make some changes, with, you know, rules of four percent of that, that non-contract instruction, those are folks that are actually in the, in class, class names, you know, supporting their teachers, providing education aren't necessarily tied back to the, the teacher contract. Debt service, eight percent, obviously, I would love to be able to say that they are, but depending on that, depends, I think, on this. The improvement, the improvements we did to the school a decade or two ago, so if you'd be interested, the principal, I don't know, was in school. We also had some money in there, which is the regenate, so, uh, I'm not even gonna, I'm not even thinking of it, I remember it as the BOCET program. We're regenating, yes, they did a, a big build out of a new facility several years ago. We pay our percentage of that, uh, based on our student population that, that tax. So really, a hundred, the total budget, you have a thirty-seven percent, just truly, you gotta, like, go for it, rather than, we need to go in and make, make changes if necessary. So what do we do? You know, we, obviously, we're, I put it as here in the room, it looks like, was here for that, that sunny spring day, that we had the longest time in, I think, in, in history, and so, you know, we listened to, uh, folks, and listened to lots of comments, and lots of discussion. And as Dr. Brown came on, we're starting to learn first, and you think that, uh, to work, as an administration and the school, I said, what is it that we can change to be able to to make a difference to the budget, but not impact the education for the students? Again, our primary goal is to maintain the bottom of education for our students. So we pulled about a hundred, twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, out of the overall budget. So where did that come from? Uh, the first one in there was the PE teacher was got, both half and a half to third son. You know, I just said, hey, we can't go in and just get the cut. Teacher provides facilities with the number of teachers. This was something that was in process, putting out the proper notifications and the name, so we could walk through that. The reason we're going from full time to two-thirds, comes out to a student population, and the number of actual gym classes, other than that, that eventually was teaching. So, uh, we're lucky, the individuals there are the greatest to stay on, and reduce capacity. So we're maintaining our staff, continuing to maintain the staff. Also, the next one there, benefits and insurance. When we build this budget out, the budget process starts, uh, well, it starts back to. Nope, I didn't.
Hi.
Nope, you're showing that? If you. How better than that's all of it? For those of you who can't see the. Actually, guys, benefits and insurance, and this process starts back, uh, early in the year, it got before then, with, you know, Sally and the, uh, the superintendent pointing at the numbers, we came in, the, uh, the team here, some of those numbers are estimates, specifically, benefits and insurance, those are estimates. See, as the year goes on, we get back to seeing them. Since the time we need, we've been able to actually see what the actions are gonna mean, and so. As a, as a surprise, health insurance and insurance actually came in, built it under what we had, so I cashed for about a thousand dollars. Uh, we didn't touch any of the, uh, currently filled staff position, but we did have one part-time student, that we've had a, a hard, really hard time filling. We felt that we could get that. Uh, the technology budget, thanks to, uh, Nikki Call over for giving her husband and giving her dollars spent this year. By, done in June, we were able to ship that cost into this year, we were able to take that out of the FY twenty-five budget. Uh, school nutrition was cut by fifty thousand, and we cut the capital reserve funding by thirty percent. Okay, after those, which last two, reserve reminds, and more things over here in a couple of minutes. But that's normally really to find a hundred and forty thousand dollar savings in the, in the budget. Alright, so what wasn't changed? So we made no changes to currently employed workers. So we didn't go in and start, uh, start taxing people. Uh, we also made no changes to non-teacher healthcare. Healthcare benefits are standardized for teachers and their teacher contract, but we kept, uh, non-teaching personnel, we didn't, we didn't have to table. We made no changes to the transportation plan, not the changes to our transportation plan, you may made in terms of timeframe and what we're doing here, feel especially Dr. Brown and me, and if you had enough time to really delve into that, and come over with the long-term plan, for how we're gonna do transportation in the future. So we didn't make, we didn't make any big changes to either sell or buy, you know, all of that, that would be on the table in the, in the options. Alright, so reserve funds, so it's always a little bit complicated, the post, uh, when you're working on that, that's sent out, uh, in the, uh, in the school budget, because you got the operating budget, you got debt service, you have research wise, it's all just kind of complicated, but so, we're talking about the bus, our operating budget, is to comply and spending, it's actually on previous. Obviously, you touched on the debt service, and then down below that, if you want, yeah, and the finances here on the air, and everything. Got, we got these reserve lines, so these reserve funds are, just gotta think of these as this would be the problem, you're saving money for a purpose in the future. That's all it is, and then there are taxpayer dollars that are taken out, and then we save money, we set aside, specific figure for particular uses, and we do that so that we can spread, spread our loss time the expensive or fine dollar items, so we're not coming back with a really big spreads in one year, so things like buses, that coverage to the school. Uh, solar, the, the solar, uh, ceramic, these types of things are your reserves. Kind of getting into this. So, one of the things that we've done this year, is spend this, applies back to reserve fund. If we're taking a longer term budget, that's fiscal management, and it's overall, which, that how we do budget for the school. And so, historically, you know, private businesses. When lots of budgets, there's lots of variability and lots of, so, for instance, give me an example. And I'm just gonna make up numbers, I'm, I'm holding all these numbers right here, as the example is to say that special intestine, that can get really expensive, right? So we might, might say, well, you're making thirty thousand dollars. So what, so historically, we've put thirty thousand dollars into the budget, well, during execution, maybe that year, it was, maybe it was five thousand dollars. So then you end up with this twenty-five thousand dollar chunk, which just sits in the bank. And the school budget, it's just like your budget, it's a cash-based budget, so, you raise money, you burn money through taxes. You spend money, and hopefully, at the end of it, you have some money left over, that's your savings. And the world of the school budget, that's anything that's called refund lines. And so there's some rules about how we're supposed to manage our fund balance. So state law basically says we're going back, but you kind of change the, the credit, but we're going back, but we're supposed to only maintain what's called an assigned fund balance, basically, money in the bank, that we haven't decided what it's supposed to be used for, those five, people that buy the percent of your, of your operating money. So, so that's what we're gonna try. So we're gonna, we're trying to manage our fund balance moving forwards, it's all in that five percent. Over the past few years, it started to refill during COVID, again, kind of out of control. And, uh, and so we had, that's where the four hundred thousand dollars came from last year, so. Try and control that five percent. The second piece that we're doing, how many of those expenses are pre-earned, like that special education tax, like mixed stuff. And what we're doing is we're saying, you know what, let's create what we call a contingency fund, and just so we're, this wasn't something that Zach or Sky or the board just dreamed up. Uh, we're just not that creative, we went to our accounts, we listened to our auditors. And they said, what you really need to be doing is creating this contingency fund. Stop just bringing that thirty thousand dollars into the budget, put fifteen into the budget, put fifteen into a contingency reserve. And over time, we build up the contingency reserve to be equal to five percent of your operating budget. And then you can stop having to go raise that money year-over-year, over time, that'll help bring taxes down. It'll take us a few years to build that fund up, but it's the right thing to do. And also, the money is still there. If we need it, that's, but it's there, contingency reserve, if we have a budget and not enough in there for, especially, especially, especially testing. We would be able to go back and pull it straight out in the contingency fund. So here's us, a bit of, a bit of padding, anyway, with flexibility, uh, from the school administration and the school board's perspective. But we'd like to get to the industry, because we'd like to get to where we're doing really good, really tight, really accurate. But when you do that, you're under risk, getting it wrong one year, maybe you're off by one or two percent. Well, if you've got a contingency fund, it's held up, you've got to put fund balance to the side, and gives you this ten percent buffer so that we're not in a position to be coming back to the taxpayer, being here and saying, hey, we just made a big mistake. So, again, a little bit of long-term planning, long-term, but this is where we're trying to go, make some good decisions, sound decisions, in the long term. Alright. The second fund that, that in the new stadium catch that goes up, is the capital reserve fund. So capital reserve funds, this is the fund that basically is used for fun and building ingredients. So the most obvious thing that we've seen here recently is the new roof on the school, so you guys, they're coming to the school, uh, every few years, we've been walking through random triangles that are blown off, speaking of his time, we had to do that. It's a, that, that, uh, project, and it was an FY twenty-three, that zeroed out. Reserve fund, and you had to go back and take the dollars out of the actual operating budget, the portion that you had at the time. Large enough reserve fund, got really hard in FY twenty-three. So FY twenty-four, board was able to, that's dollars back in there, and did a back contract. Uh, one of the things that we're looking for, for this, for FY twenty-five, is to work with them, to work with Dr. Brown. They're really good, Daniel, on one of the long-term capital projects that they're making up in this, this school. Got a beautiful school. Wasn't built yesterday, uh, we've got a beautiful facility, it's got a niche match, really old, really new, a little bit. And so, as we try and figure out, how old are those nature, I mean, it's how old are those AC systems, how old are these one, or this, uh, the points that has to be done on the building? These are all big dollar costs, like it's high phase out, so we're trying to make sure that we're originally have a little money if we need to. Only trying to have enough to maintain this, this building itself. So, originally, we had posed sixty thousand dollars a year, and cut that back to fifteen. We feel confident that you've got enough, uh, money to be able to last six months here. Oh, well, Dr. Brown and her team worked really hard, get the board to go that long-term plan, we're back in town. Alright, the school nutrition fund, this one is a little bit walking as well, and one is probably was that, here, so, if I can break it down into fairly, uh, kind of nuts and bolts basic. We, we develop our, our school nutrition fund, uh, budget. We spend money on town, and at the end of the year, we transfer over our nutrition fund. And some years that covers it, most years that doesn't cover it, so it ends up happening, isn't it? But especially as the plate, we've incurred it dead, but it's, so basically, it goes on the town's books. And we end up owing the town that, that money. You guys remember last year, uh, it was off-budget, there was an article that was done, that's with the budget, so it's a little, little confusing, if you will. But the school used a hundred thousand dollars of our, our fund balance in the same there, to pay back, yeah, to pay back the tab. So, and it's like a big chunk out of it, I'm saying where we are right now, is we're trying to go across around, so Dr. Brown, I guess, you're working to figure out exactly what's even gonna be happening with this, because in an ideal world, we will get to where we're no longer running deficits, it's just gonna take us time. And so when we looked at the budget, and looked at where we can be saving money this year, uh, to the taxpayer, but we just took thirty thousand dollars out of the fund reserve, that we had to set aside and pig that, and that. Trying to be what we're saying, to this act, and please just hold our note, our country, just, you know, I think you pulled out one here. And then we reduced twenty thousand dollars into the actual school food budget that we, we never tried to go. And so basically, we did this, let's go back to the status quo, a million year, see if you can figure this out, and only do more things, a little more, a little uh, before we make, make some more, uh, substantive changes. Alright, the solar project research, hopefully, if you guys noticed it, on the way up here, we saw solar array, so we have a solar and that was built out years ago, and when that project was structured, was that we had to pay to buy that, uh, buy that out and run it ourselves, so today, think of that as, that's a little, like, local city, if you want, it's easy, like that, it's global electricity, not, not all of it. And so, by buying it out, we'll be able to get that electricity, you know, for, for maintenance. So, the date of buyout, first day we were led by it, it's FY twenty-five, six to mid-year, and this last twelve point one that's going in here, rounds out the buyout. That purchase price is going to here soon, and it changes every year, but this is, this should be the end of the, uh, the solar array, uh, research. Now, we are, we are not immediately moving to purchase the solar array, uh, we've got a one verse maintenance team, and so, before we actually take that the school board and maintenance team and Dr. Brown are looking at that picture, that, when you understand them, taking the maintenance system, then and make sure that we're not overburdening our, our maintenance staff, so. We'll be, where we are is, we fully funded, we're going to make a decision in the future. Bus reserve. The bus reserve is to raise funds for teacher transportation fees, but I mean, the buses were the best, I spoke to this a little bit already. Our bus reserve, I think, is, well, I'm a little bit on the phone side right now, it's, we've got twenty-one thousand dollars apart. He stuck with the, uh, previous jurisdiction proposal, with prepaid in there, keep up, talk to. And yet, it sounded a bit broken record a little bit, hopefully, Dr. Brown is, probably, I guess, we got another task, we need to figure out what our transportation policy is. I, you know, and it's bigger than just the bus. For those of you who don't know, we have three guys, two of them are newer, one of them is, as well as we have to deal with fairness and this, uh, private, uh, private pencils, he goes back and forth, and so getting a, for understanding that, to make sure that we've got a long-term plan, about to balance out, you know, the school population, which is on island versus off island, is something that they're gonna be taking a look at this next year. Alright, so that's the reserve gas, now first, we've got a year-over-year comparison numbers. So, again, we talked about different parts of the budget, so, the operating, that's what you're looking at here, so this is the, this is the operating budget, not including the reserve funds, not including debt. So, the two lines, the two straight lines, general, this general rule of thumb if you're looking at school budgets, and this kind of kind of ties back to inflation, it's rules of thumb, you expect to see this school budget around two to four percent, and it's just kind of a big rule of thumb. And so, with that, that tone there, that you're saying, this is ruined off, like, when you want to start, this, that is we got data for. So what you can see is that, we actually have the lowest operating budget growth year-over-year, that's what we got, at almost like six percent. Now, this is the drop of four point seven percent, which is what the school board imposed the last time again, and is also significantly below what the previous administration proposed, uh, over the budget development, some points of facts, so we're pretty, pretty comfortable to get pretty aggressive with regards to five million dollars savings in the operating, it's important because these are those year-over-year saves. So now, if you look at total sp- total spending year-over-year. And what you see here is that we are, again, you're looking at that, that's two to four percent growth. What you can see is that we have brought us right back down, about close to that two percent year-over-year growth in spending. If you look at actual total dollars spent by the, uh, by the school last year, we significantly exceeded the, uh, we significantly exceeded that four percent margin. So, uh, so we feel very comfortable with the, what it sounds like, and we are, we are controlling the spending of this institution well. We are on the lower side of what you would expect for a normal, uh, education institution throughout the state of Maine, with that in mind. So we, we are right there at that two percent. So you go, okay, so if you're controlling the spending, why is it that I live at the bottom of what was presented, it said almost thirteen percent increase in taxes? That come, that is the nap problem year-over-year, and what's back to you is the use of the fund balance. So last year, total fund balance, actually, yes, if you, in the, uh, in the budget as well, and second budget, was five hundred thousand dollars. So there was four hundred thousand, there was a budget, there was a hundred thousand dollars that was still over to, uh, to the town, becoming the, the school nutrition debt. So, what you can see is, again, you got the two and four percent lines there. We are right, just slightly above that, that normal's percent. Basically, what I'm saying is, we are right where we should be, if you take into account the, the significant dollars that were pulled out of the bank last year to reduce your overall taxes. If you take, if you, we had not used those dollars, we would not be looking at this percentage increase difference. That makes, makes some sense. So, uh, again, I feel that we are right there, we're supposed to be from a, uh, from a spending perspective, and this is just the, the the resolution of the one-time five hundred thousand dollar, um, say, give back, because that, that would say that, if it was your, if it was your money, again, that was tax dollars, the five hundred thousand dollar use of dollars, we have a fund reserve. And the reason we did that, what, the school board presumably identified that those dollars existed, and then we also put to get a back line of state statutes of five percent, and so that was why you saw that big one-time use. So, uh, with that, that's the budget, let me talk, a couple of nuts and bolts, you guys have explained to me what's gonna happen at the special town meeting. And it's been a lot of fun, for a lot of folks here, the last few, couple of weeks, talking with lawyers, and giving more lawyers, having four conversations, and then having lawyers talk to each other. So it's been great, uh, but this is, this is basically where we are, where we, it's, you're gonna see article ones, the election mark. Article two is what I refer to as, this is the clean slate mark. Everybody believes that nothing that we pass regarding the school is applies anymore, but this is the, where it's gonna make it real clear to everybody so, article two is this clear slate that basically says, nothing that we pass about the school, this, first time in it's considered passing. Good thing is good. So then we have to do all of the other articles, one by one, actually, send of, of, uh, of school articles. So, now, this is where it gets a little bit more interesting, and, uh, like I'm not a lawyer, so I do what they tell me in sometimes, but what they told us was the articles need to be presented back to the town the exact same way they presented first time in. So, uh, now, okay, well, how does that work? Passed to give, like, almost a half, and it's moderator, well, it's the article, they give you a second, and then the school board will step forward, and if we will make a motion to amend that article to be appropriate number, which, um, realize that changes that we made, then the school board will, will have to, we're second that, and then I'll maybe, maybe discuss it to the public. And then hopefully, it will be passed, and, uh, then we can move on. So, one of the pieces, one of the reasons, just behind the scenes, is so important for us to get the numbers right in the articles, is that, once we're done with this, the school goes and has, there's all this information, it ends as state tools and state computer systems, and so it's really important that the funding, the funding, the spending matched the funding the way it's, if those things don't match. Never experienced it, but I've been told it's not a good place to be. So by going, by walking us through this somewhat complicated process, we will get to, uh, we'll get to, like, all the numbers matched. And with that, at this point. So get to your questions. Yes, sir.
Um, could you use your microphone, add the media, you?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'd like to have your understanding. I'd like to have your understanding of the fund balance here.
My understanding of a fund balance is?
You, you use it a lot.
So my, my understanding of a fund balance is, uh, must simplify. View of it is the fund balance is the money left over at the end of the year you haven't spent. Added to the money that is left over from previous years. And then you've got two pieces of that fund balance. One are is the piece that is reserved, assigned to the reserve accounts. And then one is the unassigned fund balance, which is the piece that hasn't been either used to offset taxes. Or assigns to a reserve account.
Okay, so, uh. You, you use something like that. You use fund balance. Like it used to be, it will, uh. Or balance budget balance. A very different concept. When the law was passed, create fund balance. It would, it changed everything. So this, this, the board understands something like you have this. Excess fund balance for me. How did you ever have such a few of them?
So. So some, a lot of that was preme. So I can't necessarily explain to you how it came to be. I can explain to you, um, that what the finance committee last year. Uh. Went back through the last decade and worked the audits. And was able to uncover that there was a significant confidence. Uh, that was sitting there and then we were also. That, that's when we were able to find that the school owed the ten dollars. So what, what was being done, uh, by the school or why this was being used as aggressively as it probably. I, I would say this, this Zach's counter probably should have been over the years. And was allowed to grow to the level that it didn't. Uh, that, that I can tell you is that I'm going to identify it and then working with it to get it back under control. But I'm back within state statute of limits.
So if the, the. Do you wait for the father to determine the fund balance? The plan of a certain fund balance. Again, that. How would you provide?
So the, because. The short answer is we have decided up to this point to waive and use those. Latest auditors set of financials. As fund balance, uh, for our fund balance calculation. We do take a little bit of a look and we think it might be in the future. Uh, based on some estimates, but when we're making the decision as to what to use, we are using a lot of. All right, thank you.
Right, maybe I can just blow that. We just, you have. And, um. I guess the legislature made statutes can where, um. It was five percent, I think for a number of years, or actually not. Then they updated to you became. And then during COVID, it changed. And we got, um, close to a hundred ninety six dollars. Um, fun, so, so was one of our.
Should have, you're right, we're having to have this planning, right? For this cost, uh, just going back to the town. And continuing operations as usual. And so the expectation that we may increase that definitely. Sir.
For the, uh, for the fund balance, it was big. Uh, you said the state requires that be smaller and something. State required to defer to all of them on security. Buy it in the future, do other budgets down the road, other expenses, eventually work it down. In a way with. Eliminate the twelve point nine seven factor.
So. So the way the law is written is it doesn't have to follow spending points. It needs, there needs to be a plan, a need to have a cure now. And so what I can tell you is that the finance committee last year. Uh, did not recommend giving all that money back. And one chance, the finance committee had actually recommended was, uh, was using that money to find the reserve funds. Being a lower taxes in the future. Uh, the finance committee's recommendation was not the final recommendation. Voted by the previous administration or approved by the previous, uh, school board.
It seems like, uh, if there was sort of leveling on that, like. Then the increase might be more aligned with what it has been that two before. But we've seen that budget in doubt. This year.
One, one hundred percent agree. And that's when the finance committee made the recognition that we did, uh, when, uh. Went in this direction. We moved that and said, this is going to be pretty challenging next year because it's going to end up. We're going to end up with a really big percentage increase, even though the spending is changing.
Right.
So I, I, I agree with you, having left for it, it was, uh.
Getting from help.
It was like the, the end of like this marks. We think the most important piece of this whole thing is it's not a, this is not a. Spending issue. This is not, and that's the most important thing. It's not a school board, our school administration, what's supposed to have just gone off and said, they need to go by. You know, platinum, everything and diamonds, pressed everything and let's just go make praise. The, the spending is under controlled. It's under control as it ever has been at this school. So that is good. What we're talking about, so we're talking about the funding side of this and about how we. Took a break on the funding side last year and get back to where we're at this year. It's just that that percentage increase looks inside of it.
Yeah. So, uh. Under, under lessons learned while, as it sounds like you're deciding. That we did learn that for us. We may never have known the big windfall like that. I think it would be important not, not to provide assistance with a budget increase.
I have to. Thank you, sir.
Can I, can I clarify? I, I feel like, um. We got the taxpayers read about a huge windfall last year, got a lot of money back. Yay. If you don't want, if you want your taxes to go down. So to say that there was a huge increase in the budget, what Zach's numbers show is that. That's a technical issue because we got a big break last. It wasn't a spending increase. I wasn't at the meeting, but we all should have been singing hallelujah. The school, you know, instead of putting money in its reserves as given that we'll have to ask the town for in the future. We all got a big break for one year. And so what Zach has done is truly extraordinary to be able to help people understand. That when people jumping up and down about a thirteen percent increase, the only reason that number was big is because we all got a windfall. Our actual spending is conservative and that's what the board is planning for in the future.
Right, and, and my point would be, it would have been better to have a two or three percent increase. Last year and then a smaller, since you're in standpoint, the perception.
A perception.
And, and based on this being here, who's been better at the town, maybe the one coming up. If you had some nice effects like that, that people have to look to, you know, so we, you were just putting on, but that's a help.
I agree with you. A hundred percent, uh, I agree with how we, there are completely. Most factors that's worth to fry this. Some of us and it took us a little bit off track. And, uh. The juniors got to raise money somewhere, too. So that is.
Oh, of course, based on that. Are you going to be. Signing this information that they're completely beating? Oh. One minute. Uh, second. Or anything else? Better percent. You need to understand. Oh.
So the answer to the first part likewise, because I'm not sure. I think it's still important, it's how to figure out details, um, that's happening and. We want to do the entire presentation, your stripped down version of this. Uh, I think it better be. My, I, my guests, as guests, this points up, there probably will be a stripped down version of it. So you don't get quite anything, so I'm just going to back up. Uh, I think you said that, that question was, you know, the audience just.
I think a stripped down version would be good. But otherwise, we will have to stand at the beginning of this period to be. And I can think because we'll go through the same. In turn. Like, it was boiling out. I think the question about. You know, kids in there. Who, I, what I. I think this one, the cause of the two percent, four percent of the. Well. Man who gives that one where you went out of sight, I think that's the law there. That is still difficult. You have to, it's easy on the pack man if you're doing. Work and save. Means that pretty much probably there is a divide, I would say, with all the site. So the question is, how do you effectively present? Would it people understand that, you know, that one time issue or third time issue? Numbers and water with accidents and so on. You can see a different line. I think if you also show maybe a consistent next year's. You know, I have. I thought through the same evening.
I mean, I think, I think that Stephen, and you tried to explain at the meeting. But people just stopped. Twelve point nine for the six percent and then really didn't hear out. So something along this line that could have.
It's going back, you know.
I mean, the community, I think, I'm hearing the same thing. Asia is good, I think the graphic. Because a lot of the work will pass people with, they can see a line, it's a little easier to understand. It's a key line and show that you really are over time. Very good, well, I definitely think that would be good to show. Before the meeting, um. Next, the question is a bit different between the, can you explain the, you said the eight percent of the, you know, top now, or whatever the task. Loans, the school renovation is going on, it's on a set. The composition of that, how long is it to go without?
So the, uh. I can give you the, the exact things, but so a hundred sixty thousand dollars, that is the principal. And that looks out quite simple. Uh, I'm twenty thirty four, twenty one, yeah, I got it. We were parting off the school renovation, right? You got that hundred sixty, that's all the principal on the school renovation. And you got, well, between twenty and thirty. Is the interest on the school renovation, but that and, and roughly the next four. Then you got thirty eight K of that in this region. And that's, that is the interest and principal on the region part, how portioning the region in renovation. So then would be the roof. The roof was, uh, was funded out of reserve funds in the auction. So that's, you ask me that, no debt taken to that. The solar was funded by a company. Uh, and then they get this, effectively sell us the electricity, electricity, if you will, and then we can then buy. Who likes to, sorry.
And all that, always. You see a little while enough to get rid of all that.
We, we do, it's good, you know, we're looking to make some smart choices, especially going back to your balancing the occurrences. It's, you know. You know, for instance, uh. When we hold off on making any kind of significant contributions to the. School bus records. And so we stop paying on interest on the building. And so then you're kind of catch that up in a level sense. We are trying to take into account. Managing not expectations, you know, making it small. While looking at, um, when these different costs are going to hit. Both positive and negative. And like I said, this is the last twelve thousand dollars that we need to put into the solar ring. Reserve to be able to make money to sit there. So that's, you know, twelve thousand dollars for next year as we, so we look to balance out the school nutrition fund and these other areas that. Are challenges for us. If you have a question?
Yeah. Oh. First, it was. What is the job? First, this is the same. On. The question is. School board. If the school board, and they all confront. All of all. All of it sources. It's actionable.
At this point, I don't feel any place where we're not maximizing our revenue. That's that we can take a look at the next year without the ultimate state, we are.
Well, for example. Us X is. A lot of this is going to show. Let's say three years ago, a hundred thousand problems.
Thirty three.
Uh, so it tends to cross us. All of it. And that magnet. But they're not fully maximizing.
So what I said with the banking program is that we have a banking committee and one of the charges I think this year. Is to look at tuition for magazine students. The, the next statement about students would be that. Bank students are a net positive from a revenue perspective for this, uh, for this school. If you were to remove the banking students from this school. The, uh, the reduction in cost of operating the school would be less than the tuition that they are taking to come to the school. So it's, if you look at it, first student basis, you know, the max tuition is about three, three thousand dollars. They are a bit positive from a revenue perspective. Uh, but that is an area where we are looking to make sure that we are maximizing, uh, by doing that.
The start of this, your answer is not.
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it like that. Uh, I would say that they are, say, with regards to from the, our legal sources of funds that we are entitled to. As far as I know, we're maximizing, we're receiving everything we're entitled to. As far as the banking student tuition, I think that that is an ongoing conversation that will hopefully be resolved this.
If the state of law. Louses chair. Twelve thousand fifty thousand in the home. And we all make out the same logic. We're not getting less than two thousand. And it's.
Like, yeah, if you look, if you look at the dollars, the, uh, and you. With banks, without banks, taxes will be higher to the house for our rest. If we didn't have a nice year. So they are that positive on the revenue side. There, there are ongoing discussions because over the last. Eight years, uh, sign, uh, signing regulations have been with different texts. Regarding what tuition should be for magazines. So we're working to understand what we've done over the past several decades. And, uh, seeing we have options in terms of changing that.
I think it just sounds a little too simplistic to say each kid is saying, I. Saying why they're definitely. Retire from twice as much, because they have many or way less than what it is. The whole world.
Completely agree. And I, I can tell you that, uh, we ran some numbers. I mean, I mean, I ran two next numbers about, and I was actually very surprised, not surprised, I was. In terms. In terms of getting our cost control. I was worried that thirty three thousand dollars per uh, per student, right? Uh, I don't hate it at thirty, thirty in a Chinese. Uh, we think uh, that's your life. But sure, we're running close to buying it. If you compare us to Shabine, even if it's Long Island, if you compare us to the other place that they told me. But those are all much, much higher. I mean, this I can offer fifty thousand dollars per student for those islands. So we're doing really well here in six years on a first student basis.
And also we can say adding on. Agents are a very important part of this school. And increasing that tuition, I think not only. Would or could be a net negative on the school's budget. It's financing in general, being all in a negative for schools community, the most common community. Like, to the often a large percentage of our. And the same. For donations. And also like. Knowing more people off island. Generally benefits and benefits my my type of test from some of my closest friends, friends. And I would say benefited my life. And so losing them would generally be a negative for all states.
As you are aware, I'm. The quote was, gentlemen here, this is Owen. He is our super representative to the school board. So he actually comes to all of our support meetings and provides us the the student perspective on what's happening. So it's a. It's our way of getting around uh, what's happening in the office of the school. So.
When you go online to get minutes, all the members. You go to the select board, this is what I'm because I won't read that. Trying to find the school board minutes. I still can't find them. But I'm not that literate of a computer. Why can't it be the easy as it is to get that?
So I I know I sound like a broken record when I keep saying that this is something that we've identified and that we're working on. Uh. This was identified last year, I mean, I'm on the school. The challenge for me to get to minutes, to get to agendas, to get to policies, to get to. Back to action. I don't like to think of myself. Pretty computer literate person. Was virtually impossible. So. We I care what your your concern is, and this is ours to be done. All of Dr. Brown and then working with the fix. And so it's a. Two-fold. The issue is really two-fold. One is. Where do you go to find information? And then two, we were last year, we were six or seven months. In a rear or behind, just posting the minutes in these. So that I could tell Dr. Brown that's I'm going to change uh, the reporter. I think she let us get to that. So yes, I appreciate the comment. And as asked, there are people out there who are actually in the uh, in the minutes.
I can too.
What other questions or concerns or comments, anyway?
Um, that.
The audio is very garbled. Sorry. Sorry to get hard to get all the information. If you just move over that. Nice salary verification. That's it. All right. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we will conclude public session. Any other comments from the uh?
I just thank you all for coming and asking the questions that you did and uh, seeing what a. Really comprehensive program was put together to try to uh. Make the meeting new did happen. Uh, something that wouldn't probably happen again and see that there is a competent group of. Functioning here at the school. Try to see that education can continue in the way it always has. Thank you for showing up.
As you, anybody else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Again.
All in favor? I think because we're all live, we're actually go. Roll call, Sky.
Hi, hi.
Holly and I.
Jennifer, hi.
Laura's eye.
Zach, hi. Here's your hand. This is adjourned. Thank you for inviting our typical sound combo.